Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the school district in North Fond du Lac. And I'd like to start with roll call vote, please.
Chizum.
Here.
Kowalski here, Hock.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Will.
All right, thank you. Report on public notice, please.
You bet. Public notice, or the agendas were mailed to KFIC 107.1, The Reporter and WFTL News Radio, and that was done on Wednesday, March 14, 2018. They were posted at the U.S. Bank, the district meeting room, and also the village administration area on Friday, March 16, 2018.
Great, thank you. Please rise for the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
All right. Minutes of the last couple of meetings were distributed to the members in the members' packets. Does anyone have any additions regarding these two minutes as they were published?
Just a procedural thing, I think it may be because it's a new person, but the two people that were absent at one of the meetings were listed, but the 3-0-2 indicating that wasn't on there, so I can just send you a note on that.
Yeah, make sure I'll check that's all written, you'll get that inside. Okay. Anything else? All right, with the exception of that amendment, the minutes are stand-approved and is presented to the board. Next on the agenda is a director's report. Mr. Streeter.
Cash balance on hand, over 27, 2018, $404,630.57. Receipts from 2/27 through 3/19, 2018, $57,728.73. Transportation investment accounts, $950,000. Total receipts, $1,412,359.30. Expenditures, 2/27 through 3/19, 2018, $1,206,461.81. Total expenditures, $1,206,461.81. Cash balance on hand, March 19, 2018, $205,897.49. Transactions bills are recommended for payment is shown on the attached list dated March 19, 2018, in the amount of $996,995.99. Bills to be approved at the March board meeting, three approved checks, $705,894.99. Board meeting checks, $291,906.50. Total bills to be approved, $996,995.99.
Mr. Streeter has eleven eyes. The expenditures were also distributed in the members' packets. Do any of the members have any questions about the expenses? If not, what's the board's pleasure on the $996,995.99?
I'd like more than approval of the bills.
A second. All right, a second. Any further questions or discussion? Anna roll call vote, please.
Hock.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Chizum.
Yes.
Kowalski, yes.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the department's report. Do you have anything to report?
Couple of things. This was a donation from George and Victor Cruz for a third Yamaha-based clarinet deli that little over $1,800 that they donated to the music department. And then we have a thank you to us, the board, for the supporting the Challenge Day. That was, I don't know how much, it might need to read of that, but there are some things that some of the people have said, that they sent everyone a Snapchat by saying they're appreciated and some different things, so a lot of good, good stuff out of that day. And Fond du Lac Area Foundation donated $2,000 for the incubator eating program and the Service League of Fond du Lac, $1,000 for FLC Classroom Safe Spaces. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the student council report.
We had our student council family night last Wednesday. It was a huge success. We had a lot of people come. We had games such as the cake walk and the vegan Oreo, and we also had a huge raffle drawing. Right now, we're focusing on getting ready for student council convention, which is on April 22 and 23. We have to make buttons, organize the scrapbook, make banners, things like that, that we'll compete in with other schools. And then after that, we'll be looking to elect new student council officers for the next year. That's it.
All right, very good. Any questions for student council representative? Where is the convention?
I think it's in Green Bay.
Next on the agenda is a portion of the meeting we call citizens input. This is an opportunity for anyone in attendance who would like to address the board on anything that they wish, that doesn't necessarily be on the agenda. So, I'll open it up at this point. Does anyone wish to address the board? Anyone at all? Seeing no one who wishes to address the board, I'll declare the citizens input portion of the meeting closed at six minutes after seven. Next on the agenda is item J, super tennis report. Mr. Sadoff, take it away.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Chizum. A great opportunity to recognize some incredible leaders, our teachers and our coaches, and also some amazing accomplishments by some of our student athletes and our young artists. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to our great art teacher at Friendship Learning Center, first year, but not the first year in education, just doing an absolute awesome job. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jane Mongin, and she'll introduce two of the three great artists that have won awards and one that won a state award. So, I'll turn it over to you, and the camera's right there, so if you would stand right here when you talk, that would be cool.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jane Mongin, the new art teacher at FLC. Every year, you can submit three pieces of art for the regional show, which then will go on to the state show. And I chose to submit artwork from Zachary Witt in first grade, Camila Godinez in second grade, and Adrina Welsh in fifth grade. So, their show went to, or their pieces were chosen and went to the regional show in Nina, and then they went on to the state show, and they have, in the rotunda, they display all of the artwork, which is really awesome. So, congratulations to you guys. Then, so there were over 500 pieces of artwork on display, and there are 33 awards given out, and one of the awards was given to Adrina Welsh at the elementary level, which is a big thing. In the art world, this is kind of like our Super Bowl. It's a pretty good deal. Congratulations.
So, Adina, if you want to stand up and show them your picture, too, and tell them a little bit about it.
I don't know. How did you make it?
Pivoting. She had to make her own stamp, pretty much out of all cardboard, and then she printed it several times.
Very nice. Zachary, do you want to tell us anything about your cool picture? So, it's a rooster on a chicken standing on a rainbow. Pretty much it, all right? I want to thank Jane because it's a big deal to be a talent scout like she is, and that's what all of our teachers and coaches are, is they find that great talent. So, thanks for carrying on that tradition. I know that Alice did, and really know that art projects, or art departments in great hands with the young artists. And also to the parents for aspiring, for supporting our young artists. Thank you so much for bringing them tonight, also. All right, so now what I'd like to do is turn it over to Mr. Bertram. Really excited, we have two more all-conference state award winners this year, or we actually, for our first time, we have a power lifter who finished in the top five in state. And then we actually have two, for the first time that, since I've been here, that I can remember, finished on the podium in wrestling in Madison. And then we have some unanimous all-choice, all-conference basketball. And I think we had a lot of great success, and our programs keep getting bigger and better. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Bertram, Athletic Director, to introduce all of our coaches who are all here, too, which is amazing.
That's actually one of the great things here, is that our dedicated coaches for winter sports are actually all here tonight, so rather than steal their thunder, I'm going to start off with our powerlifting coach, Mr. Moffey. If you wanted to come up and explain about his season and about all the awards that they are in this year.
All right, my name's Tom Moffey. I coach powerlifting, and I think probably the first question is, what is powerlifting? So, for those of you who don't know, it's three lifts, bench squat, deadlift. You get three chances for each one, and you try to lift more than the other person. As Mr. Bertram said, we just had our first podium at state. You have to finish top five at state to get podium and medal. Yes, we are competing against other people in same weight class, but we're also competing against schools like Nina, which has like 2,000 kids, so pretty impressive. Besides finishing top five, seven of our eight who qualified for state this year finished top 10, so a pretty good showing from North Fond du Lac ahead of state. Other than that state, we have regional competitions. Typically, again, we're competing against bigger schools like Nina, and most times, girls this year finish top three, I think, in every meet. It's hard to tell, they usually mess up the scoring, so we never really know. Which is awesome, with three regional meets and finishing top three in those is pretty great. I don't know how much we're supposed to talk about, this is my first board meeting. You're doing great, man, face. But besides all the trophies and awards and everything, I think that for the kids, it's huge. For their confidence, it takes a lot to get in a skintight singlet and go lift until you puke in front of a room full of people. So, I think that's, besides all the trophies and medals, I think that's pretty big for the athletes to, to build their confidence that way.
Excellent. Then we have Anna Maribanteau. If you understand, and we can give you a round of applause, too.
How much did you lift?
I think my total was like 5.7 for all three lifts.
And in addition to powerlifting, a great year next year, we are officially able to say that powerlifting will be a full-fledged sport, having their own account and everything on an equal basis as football, all those things there, so it won't be going through activity accounts and Orination for funding anymore, it'll actually be fully sponsored by the school. So, that's another wonderful accomplishment. Lot of work done by Coach Moffey to get that done, so really appreciative of that. Next, we're going to call up, I think it was, Mr. Smith, boys basketball.
My name is Royal Smith, the boys' basketball coach here, and we actually had, thought we had a very successful year. We ended up the season with an 8-15 record in conference. We ended up being 4-8, which was a fifth-place finish in the conference, so it's been a while since we've made it up and keep making strides from there. And one of the main accomplishments that we've had was our unanimous first-team all-conference player, Dawson Wasidell, he could stand. He had a twenty-year, unanimous first-team all-conference, there's only three of them in the whole conference voting and stuff, to be able to get that. And then also throughout his year, he ended up being, breaking the all-time school record in points per career, so a heck of a year and a great way to finish it out and giving us some positive success for us to keep going forward.
Coach Smith, in his first year as being our head coach, has gone through three head coaches in three years, so I'm very fortunate to have Coach Smith to come in. Hopefully have him for many years to come. Next up, we have, where is he right here? So, I'm there. Mr. Keel, Coach Keel with girls basketball.
When they finished my 27th season here, coaching girls basketball, feel very fortunate to coach in a district where they support all academics and sports as well. I've been blessed and had some great athletes come through here. Been fortunate to coach with some great people like Coach Kowalski and Coach Wasidelli. We had two, we finished our season 10-14. It was not the amount of wins that we wanted, but we had a lot of success as a team in a lot of different areas. We had a successful pink-out game that was held here and raised a lot of money for cancer. The girls supported an athlete from a different school that tore ACL during the season, which was a big impact. I told this the other night at our banquet. That athlete was very impressed with the things that we sent her and the letters that we sent her. She actually witnessed another girl tear her ACL that they were playing against, and their whole team had decided from what we had done, our team, they were going to pass it on and do it for that girl. So, we not only affected that young lady's, you know, time of need and disappointment, but it got passed on to somebody else, so I thought that was great. Our two captains this year were two seniors, Nicole Scott, Nicole, come on up here with me. Nicole Scott was second-team all. We're proud of this girl. She put herself into record books. She was about a half a percentage point away from breaking the single, the career free throw percentage, something that she worked very hard on. If any of you went to the free throw line with people screaming at you, know that it's not that easy. She was eighth all-time leading scorer here in North Fond du Lac, doing that in three years on varsity. So, and she was a captain along with Kayla Dool, our other recipient of all-conference, was first-team unanimous. She was unable to be here today, but she put herself on the board in the gym, third all-time rebounder here at North Fond du Lac. She was seventh in scoring all-time, did that for four years, played varsity ball for four years. So, very proud of those two girls, and they led our team and were the reason that we were successful and well-respected throughout the conference, so thank you.
First-year athletic director, I'm very appreciative of both Coach Keel and Coach Smith. We had lots of scheduling conflicts this year, which actually forced us into several double-header event nights, which turned out really great, but they were one heck of a headache. And I'm very happy to say that scheduling for next year is done, so, and there are no double headers for next year, except I do have a wrestling-basket double header, but that's a little bit easier to work out, so good to go on that. Finally, I have Coach Forsyth here with wrestling, and he might take a little bit of time, so I'll go.
So, this is my 18th year coaching wrestling here, and our most successful to date. In wrestling, we do not vote for all-conference. It's determined by your place at the conference tournament. And in 14 weight classes, we had nine of our team members make the all-conference team. So, over half the team was on the all-conference team. So, I'm going to start with our third-place finisher, our honorable mention, Ricky Almiger was third place, so he earned honorable mention. And then at 113 pounds, Josh Burnett finished second in the conference and is second-team all-conference. Josh snuck in the back there. I don't think so. At 120 pounds, Joey Krizineski finished second in the conference and is second-team all-conference. Joey, you want to stand up? And we had Lane Fritch at 182 pounds, finished second, second-team all-conference. And we had Dakota Mas at 220 pounds, finished second. Dakota lost a tough one in the finals to the state runner-up. He lost 4-1 in the finals to the state runner-up, so tough weight class this year. He also finished ahead of a kid that finished fifth in state from WLA. He finished third, so that was one of the tougher weight classes in our conference this year. And then our first-team all-conference at 126 pounds, Abe Gebo was conference champ. At 145 pound, or 152 at conference, Andrew Forsyth was conference champ. At 160 pounds, Dalton Fritch was conference champ. And a little side note, Dalton set our single-season record for pins this year with 20, 25 pins this season. And then at 195 pounds, Marcus Orlandoni was conference champion and his first-team all-conference. And Marcus, Marcus was also nominated for the conference wrestler of the year, which was won by a wrestler from Amro. And then, as we continued on with the state series, we have not had an individual state qualifier in this school for 11 years, and we have only had six place winners in our school history. Six individuals that have been place winners. I think some, a couple of them were multiple-place winners. This year, we had three individuals qualify for the state meet. So, Dakota Mas at 220 was third at sectionals and was a state qualifier. And then after the conference tournament, Andrew Forsyth went down to 145 pounds and finished second at sectionals, and then went on to place fifth in the state. And then Marcus Orlandoni was sectional champion, and he went on to place fourth in the state. So, fantastic season for all of our wrestlers.
Please tell me that you made a mistake, and you really haven't been here 18 years.
I really have been 18 years.
This is your fourth five-year plan this year.
This is my fourth five-year plan, and the plan has always been to knock off Lemire. We lost the conference tournament this year officially by five and a half points. I later found a scoring error, we actually only lost by a point and a half. It was close.
Doug's not competitive at all. So, how many are coming back? Who do we have coming back for wrestling? We have, I know Dakota, you're a senior.
Dakota's a senior, Ricky's a senior, Abe's a senior. And then our other senior was on JV, so we had four seniors total, so majority of the team will be back next year.
And I want to, I saw Joey's here, and you said Josh didn't make it.
Josh didn't make it.
But Joey did, thanks for coming on the spring break.
Yep, Joey's here.
For coming on spring break. We have a great partnership with St. Mary Springs Academy that really helps not only our kids get better, but gives them an opportunity to have a wrestling program. I know you and Ken do a lot of work to make that happen, so thank you very much for making that happen.
Along with all the great winter coaches that we have, the number of records that were being broken has actually inspired the work of, to start talking about with Orination, actually redesigning and redoing the record boards in the gym, replacement of those, to make them more visible for people, more aesthetically pleasing, I guess you would say, adding some more banners, and really bring to life a lot of the stuff that's going on in our gymnasium, working with OriNation on that. If you go through the high school commons, you'll actually see now all of the team banners are hanging up there, so you can see all that being advertised. Jumping ahead now, as of today, all spring sports are in full action, ready to go. We have our first cancellation of tomorrow's softball game already. So, it's not really a cancellation, it's actually a rescheduling. It was rescheduled to April 6, so, but we look forward, now looking at the forecast. Hopefully, Mr. Mann was able to get the fields worked up a little bit today, and we're hoping to get going with softball next week, Tuesday, and track goes off to their first indoor meet on Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, tomorrow.
No, tomorrow. So, we're ready to go here with spring sports. Track, softball, baseball, we had the concern over whether or not we were going to do varsity or JV earlier in the year, and now it turns out that we're going to run both. So, we will be running both a varsity and JV baseball season this year, and to the point where we are actually looking for one more wonderful person that they're out there willing to help out with baseball. Coach Behringer would really appreciate a third person to help out with baseball, so if there is somebody out there, we'd be glad to help with that. Also, I hope another person interested in the middle school track position, we have a middle school track position open still yet, but we're looking pretty good at first things, sports are concerned. And then, Mr. Sadoff will have some announcements later about our fall sports coming up then, so, but with that, I'm done.
And I want to also thank, well, Mr. Bertram's up here, first year as athletic director, came in, had to do a lot of things with organizing, with football, just did a great job, I'm really happy, I'll think about all, thanks for your vision and keep working hard, and the coaching staff that you've helped to develop, so thank you very much. All right, athletics keep getting better and better, just like your academics, it's cool. So, at this time, we do have a, people have to start scooting out. You can start, I'll give a break if you want to start, you got it? Otherwise, I got it. You guys want to scoot out real quick? All right.
You could stay, we promised not to give us any.
(Inaudible). Mine, too. Thank you, Bud. Thanks, Dad.
All right, as we're leaving, I'll do robotics, okay? As we're leaving, I just want to bring up, we're going to bring robotics in April. Currently, right now, we have, last year, our high school team was one of the three teams that won the state competition, went to Worlds in Louisville. This year, Dave Cohen's son is a mentor, and his grandson is one of the programmers and designers of the robot. They actually were the fifth-seeded team out of eight, and they took in one state, so they qualified to go to Worlds. So, now we have, Bessie Allen has a team, middle school team, going to Worlds in robotics, and that's going to be at the end of April, I believe, correct, in Louisville. There's two teams, 1021T and 1021G. By winning this year, at different conferences, they've qualified also, so 1021T is Dave Cohen's grandson's and son's team, and then 1021G is another middle school team, they qualified to go to council bluffs, and that's going to be in three weeks in Iowa, which is about eight hours away. So, a lot of exciting things in robotics we have, you can see all the awards, the Zagars for that, this is Stefani's, Bond Lenders, Hamers have done a great job organizing. It's, it's pretty cool. Matter of fact, when I was down at MSOE at middle school state and high school state, there was, people came up and said, boy, you guys have the best program in the state, it's pretty amazing, all the C of Orange, really cool. And then also Josh Getch, who is one of the mentors, his children, they live in the village, he's looking at bringing Vex Robotics, it's called, I think, IQ, and what that is, is for the young kids, it's kind of like, not as erector-settish, a little more Lego-ish, but it's the same type of competition to keep that going, so he's going to be working with Kerry Joe, probably some of the fourth-grade team, who do a project lead the way, and so it's a pretty amazing thing. So, we're going to bring the, we'll invite the robotics kids in April, and it's, it's pretty neat. I've been to a lot of those events, and it really, they do a great job for school. And the amount of volunteers, it's one of the things, when people say, you know, we don't have a lot of volunteers, and nobody, I'll tell you what, the amount of people that we have helping on OriNation, Vex Robotics staff, there's more people actively wanting to help now than ever before. It's just we get so busy that we fail to realize what really happens, so, great job. And then at this time, we have a board member, his name is Mike Streeter. Mike is not running for reelection yet. We still have one opening, we have two. April 3rd is the election. Steve Hock's position up, and Mike's is up. Mike is very involved with the village, and does a great job with the village, and decided to kind of focus in where he could, he wants to make sure that he's the kind of guy who wants to do the best in whatever he does. So, he is not currently running, doesn't mean there can't be write-ins or anything like that, just hypothetically saying, just in case. But, with that said, I know that Mike was also a community member that would come and visit and who helped us out with many things since I've been here. So, on behalf of the school district of education, just want to give you this plaque. Come on up. So, in recognition, appreciation of service to the student-staff community of the school district of North Fond du Lac from April 2015 to April 2018, thank you for your leadership and dedication as a member of the Board of Education. Thank you. Go retire a nice four. Go retire a nice four-piece crystal set of drinkware from Oriole Nation. Enjoy it with your family and friends.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. All right, that's emotional time, you're going to be okay?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say, I was, I appreciated everybody supporting when I was on the board. I'm running for really president, so I didn't think I could do both at the same time. I don't know if I could get in or not, but I do appreciate the board's support, I like working with everybody. It was nice having Steve on, you know, for someone being on the board that long, when you have like, you know, unfortunate thing like expulsion or something like that, it's nice to have someone that knows how to run. And being part of the referendum was interesting also, so I was glad I was part of that. So, and bill of board meetings are not as entertaining as this, you know, but then, you know, recognize folks and stuff, so I mean, it was always nice when they announced like what the plays are going to be and they have the kids coming, of course, and all that. So I appreciated being part of the board and working with all of you, so, thank you.
And know that your name will be on the plaques and will include you in everything as a referendum, it was just being a critical part of that, from even though you're not current, you won't be currently on the board, until you deconstruct, you'll be part of the whole program.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, couple things, so policies, worked with Dr. Richard Zimmern, we got a slew of them coming up, nothing too controversial. There's some open records case that went to Supreme Court from Appleton. The school district did something that in hindsight wasn't very right, but it's helping to solidify what a lot of our open records laws, which is in the policy. So I'm going to have like a policy meeting probably, I think in May, or maybe, maybe a half an hour before a regular board, or an hour before a board meeting on the 14th of May, that will go through those things, so that'll be coming up. Otherwise, future board agenda items, going to be looking for maybe, are you guys around next week at all, or towards, I'm looking next, this week? Maybe just really quick for an hour or something, I'll send something up, we'll talk later on. We have all the other bids in for the FLC project, flooring, lines, things like that. I talked today with, Dave and I met with Dave Mertens and Allison from Bray, Dave from CD Smith, and like to bring that list of contractors. We looked at the same list, great companies, local and value. So we have the final list to bring to you, so I'll talk later on, then maybe we can have a quick board meeting, I can explain those things and we can get those forwarded this week, yeah, if possible. Other than that, I think we have some pretty cool announcements. And before we hit the cool announcement, Mike, you want to give them a little update on summer school and how that's kind of evolved?
So summer school's not cool?
Way cool, man. Way cool.
Right. Due to the referendum and the construction project, summer school's going to be different than it was before, it's going to be shortened. And I classify two types of classes that are going to be offered. Category A would be the typical music band, classes that will last a predetermined amount of time, and those will start right away after school ends in June. Will have terrific conditioning lasting the whole summer. We will have high school online for sure, like the remediation, credit recovery, I'm not sure about history or English yet, but those will be done, those will last the whole summer and they'll start right after school ends. Category B would be where the major changes will take place. We will be starting summer school for category B classes in, after the 4th of July week. So we're going to have getting ready for PK first, PK kindergarten first and second classes, and they're going to be held at ELC. And that is pretty much the gist of all the summer school classes that we're going to offer this year. Breakfast and lunch will still be offered to the community. For this, we're trying to reduce as much foot traffic to advance as possible, so the students from ELC will have breakfast and lunch tied to their curriculum, which means that they'll be meeting in the classes first and then going to breakfast. And then when they take their break, they'll go be walked here for lunch too, and vice versa. So we're going to try to find parking areas in ELC and the back of the high school, so that we can make sure that we have no, like relatively few, like foot traffic, so that we can start with the construction.
And some of the construction too, Mike, depending on bids and things like that, we might have been aggressive with our timeline, so some of the Bessie Allen horse event might not take place until next summer too.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to figure that out.
Well, we'll be fine.
Yeah, but thank you very much, Mike, appreciate it. Anybody else have any announcements before we go to Kerry Joe? All right, remember no board meeting next week, this is the one that we have because of spring break, and then remember in April, it's normal, the 4th Monday, and then remember in May, we only have one. And that's going to be the second Monday of May, and that's going to be a lot of contracts, things like that. But figure the April one's going to be a little longer, we're going to probably have a new board member. And then we'll do a lot of human resource, I'll come to you with some staffing ideas and costs, so that we can go into May and get those things established for next year right away. Maria is working very diligently on the budget information, so. Excellent, and then one final thing is that this summer, we're going to start a tradition that week of the 4th of July, and Mike or Matt, make sure you let all your coaches know, we're going to try to do nothing school-related. So that week of the 4th of July, have no expectations of our kids. There's a couple districts across the state and also Northern Illinois that do that, have found great success. So if we can get into that mode where we're really hard, but that week of the 4th of July, that's known for families and everybody, that you know what, it's time to, you know, shut off the engines, recharge the batteries, get things back to neutral, Rocky and most will see how that works also this summer. Doesn't mean we won't be building in construction, I'll be here, but for the most part, everybody should chill. All right, Kerry Joe, do you have anything that you'd like to know?
I do, so first of all, I started out the morning today taped, duct taped to the wall in the gym of FLC, because, because our students raised several thousand dollars for pennies for patients. So that's how my day started out. Just before the board meeting, we got some really exciting news, which I think this is a first for the School District of North Fond du Lac. Jenny Delugary is our second grade, one of our second grade teachers, she was nominated for the Herd Cole Fellowship, and she was notified that she did win one of the awards. So she has a $6,000 grant that she personally receives, and then they also donate $6,000 to our district as a matching grant. So we're super excited about that, she's now eligible to be considered for Wisconsin Teacher of the Year as well. So she and I had a little celebration out in the hall.
Allison won the Cole Fellowship.
Okay, very good. So, yeah, so we will have her come to a future board meeting, but it was literally late breaking and awesome news, she got the letter from Herd Cole, we spelled it today, so.
Six grand, that's amazing, he's an amazing man. That is awesome. And I want to thank Kerry Joe, I think all that Samantha, Debbie and Mike. And Adam have also nominated teachers for the Herd Cole Fellowship. And there's students that also apply, but the teachers, we're also very, as Jane, we have learned earlier, talent's comes, we've got to find and really tell the stories about these great educators that we have, and there is none better than Miss D. So that's going to be way cool.
Sure.
Excellent. Anything else that you guys have, information that you want to share? You guys have any questions on that? All right. Good luck Steve on the 3rd. Mike, maybe your name gets out there, we don't have any official write-ins, so there's still time, everybody. All right?
I guess, actually, and I hate to put you on the spot Samantha, but Challenge Day was a special, and I don't know if you talked about that at the meeting after that, but it still has a pretty big impact on me, just as a participant, as an adult there, and you know, either maybe just mention a bit, or we could even have a program if we're going to do it again, but is it in the works, to continue with it?
Yes, it is, yeah. We definitely will probably have to ask Oriole Nation for some support, and looking at what, you know, how best, we had a lot of kids acting back, say, I wish we could have done it. And, you know, to have to say to kids, you know, they can only have 100 students in a day, so, you know, either we would look at, you know, purchasing multiple days, I mean, in a perfect world, I would love to have all staff go through it, you know, a different day.
Oh, my dad would do the fault.
The parents, you know. So I have reached out to Challenge Day to say, you know, kind of give us some, you know, prices, bids, whatever you want to call it, for, you know, multiple days. I know Lemire and some of the other area schools, you know, as well, want to continue. And everybody does it a little bit different. We preferred this year to do, it was about 30 kids from the freshman class, 30 from sophomore, 30 from juniors, and about 10 from seniors, to try to have the most impact. I know Bagel, for example, just does this with freshmen every year. And so again, it's, you know, what you want to take from it or how you want to use it. We continue to see some good effects from that. You know, we also had some students that, when we were supportive of the, you know, walk-up movement, that they, you know, basically wanted their voices to be heard, it wasn't about them making a stance on gun or mental health or anything, it was about, hey, you know, we want to be safe in school, that several of those kids said that they felt that they were heard in part as well because of, you know, Challenge Day, that they really felt supported by the school and people, and that people listened to them, and, you know, this was something else that they, they wanted to do. So, yes, we're going to keep planning and talking. I don't think I heard a negative remark, other than I wish I could have been included from some students, so, yes.
That's good. I, you know, I've been from the corporate world, we go through a lot of different programs, you know, mostly customer service-based, of course, because they're looking for profit, but, you know, and so I was a little pessimistic, but I agreed to do it, it's pretty flexible on the schedule. And seriously, I can't overstate the impact that it had on me, the emotions of the kids and adults and, you know, just base communication, I guess, in small groups, hearing things from kids and, you know, and the key to me was about prejudging people and not prejudging. In my line of work in insurance for people making claims, you know, it's pretty easy to prejudge that, everybody's trying to get money from the insurance company and stuff. And I made a commitment to my group, and I have Autumn Waller, when I see her, still gives me a hug and asks, how are you doing on your commitment there, Mr. Hocken? And it really opened my eyes to the fact that these people that I deal with, I don't know anything about where they were in their life, where they came from and what made them get to the point in life they were, and I needed to keep up, which I thought I was okay with, but I really focused on that now, do that. And I'm very hopeful, I checked with a few of them that I knew, how are things still at school, and most of them are saying, still, they're still seeing signs of positive stuff. So it was really eye-opening for me, so I appreciate that opportunity to be involved and with support, anything that we can do to keep it going.
Thank you, and thank you for taking the day, and, you know, we had some great, we had teachers, we had a couple of parent volunteers, we had Steve, we had Aaron, we had Lori King. It was just a really nice group, and I think there are a lot of people that were, I'm unsure, how's this, you know, going to be, and like you shared Steve, it was just very, very colorful for kids. I was hugely surprised at the quick buy-in. That, you know, again, I think our kids, you know, like all of us, you know, I thought, okay, well, let's see how they're going to take and, you know, and in a short amount of time, they were just, they're right there, and they were sharing things that I was surprised they were sharing and making commitments to one another and reaching out, and I think with what the kids now are continuing to do with the walk-up movement, you know, to continuing to, hey, if somebody's by themselves, you know, whether it be eating lunch in the hallway, you know, walk up and introduce, that you never know how that person's day is going. And if you, you know, do the walk-up and, you know, greet them and say hello, or how are you doing, that, you know, you can make, you know, their day better. So I think things like that are going to continue to be positive.
Yep, and we're going to be doing, in May sometime, we're going to take a day and try to do, we'll pick a number, and try to do maybe a thousand acts of kindness or something, and document it from 4:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night, and get people involved, keep the momentum going, so, pretty exciting. And just a final announcement too, May 21st is the school district's going to have a retirement party, and Whispering Springs, the district will run that, the cost will just be whatever the meal is. I sent out a save the date, there'll be more information. And we're going to celebrate at least four people who have given 150-plus years to education. So it's pretty amazing.
I know, I love that email.
It was like 29. It'd be her.
And that includes Debbie, and then also Debbie Gorski, which there's, she's also put in her retirement, who's served many years in the district at FLC, and in many capacities with basketball and being a parent, and her kids going through, and also Mike Reese. So, and then also today, we're going to, I'm going to ask for you to consider Judy Jarvinpah, who has been in our district for many years, also serving kids. So it'll be an exciting time, and more information comes on May 1st, it's a Monday, keep it on the calendar. And we're also going to get out, invite all former employees and community of Oriole Nation. That's all I got.
All right, very good. Any questions for Aaron? If not, next on the agenda is new business, number one, discuss and consider the retirement request of Judy Jarvinpah.
I'm just going to pass around, this is Debbie Gorski's letter, and then here's, we don't have to do, accept them, Debbie Gorski, but Judy said she's a professional contractor staff duty. So, yep, Judy's been with our district for many years, was with CISA but still serving our district, and is just a great person, her and her husband Larry, sold a house, bought a new house, and are ready to enjoy their daughter, just got married a year ago, and enjoy life. And she is very ready, I think, Maria, I think she's one of the most thorough people that made sure that she knows what she's doing, she's ready every time. We're very happy for her.
I'll make mention, except with regards to retirement resignation of Judy Jarvinpah.
Okay. I'll second. All right, we'll go second to accept the retirement request. Roll call, please.
Ah, Koldatsky, yes, Chizin?
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes. All right, motion carries. Item number two seems to be missing, so we'll go right to three.
Oh, sorry, that's, I don't know.
Discuss and consider the resignation of Dave Cohen from middle school cross-country.
Whenever I'm in my office, at my desk, and I look out and there's an icon, David Cohen standing there, and he starts walking towards me, I know something pretty substantial's going to come out of his mouth. We had just talked about him being assistant athletic director and how much he enjoyed doing, how much appreciate what he did. He walked into my room, my office, he says I'm going to have to resign, and I was almost ready to get at, but then he's a wrestler too, so he intimidates me. And he said resign Bessie Allen cross-country. So he's done a great job, but just ready to concentrate more on the assistant athletic director and wrestling, huh? Adam, any words, Dave Cohen?
Just going to comment in a bit.
Monochromatic, baby. So he does a great job, and I mean, our cross-country, Doug talks about having success for wrestling, our cross-country teams are loaded. Coming up, Dave, how many times have you guys been first or second in conferences for cross-country in the past few years?
Well, middle school boys have went to the role, but girls won't this year, and I think I mentioned in our fall sport recognition, we have 14 eighth graders on this year's team, and I would just please hit up our Carolina application, we'll sell that, every day, and answer, nice little footprint.
So we don't replace somebody like Dave, we just try to find somebody else. I'm just really glad, because we can't replace you, glad you're still here, so, help yourself. Look at, they're like twins. Athletic director and assistant athletic.
I've got that discussion for one day later.
You mean the twins thing? Yeah, there was a movie, Arnold Schwarzenegger played one of the.
Hey, this is our argument, who's Arnold Schwarzenegger character?
All right, with that, I will make a motion that with regrets, we accept the resignation of Dave Cohen from the cross-country program at middle school. All right, any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please. Yes.
Koldatsky, yes. Hock?
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes. Next on the agenda, discuss and consider extra duty contracts.
Two of them, Ed Schreiber, varsity volleyball. Interviewed him, he accepted that, didn't, now came back on Friday and we got him in. Do you want to tell a little bit about Ed?
Very highly recommended by, Ed actually was an assistant coach two years ago, and talking to a lot of the players that were able to, had played underneath him as a coach, were very excited to have him. When we did the interview, we actually had a combination of one of our volleyball players and a couple of the other coaches, and even a parent, community member on the interview committee, and all were very excited afterwards to have him come in and be our next volleyball coach. And I think he's going to do a great job, and I look forward to him taking on our program to the next level.
Great. And then we have Nate Testrowdy, who, he's got his teaching degree subbing in the district and is helping to fill a void at the track.
Nate has worked as a coach here in the district for many years already, has worked with Coach Gary Keel in basketball, does a wonderful job. And when we were struggling to try to find somebody to do the middle school track program, and he has stepped up to the place that he will take care of that for us now, so we got it. So very appreciative of him.
him being there.
I think those both do excellent.
All right, very good, so let's take them both at the same time, and what's the board's pleasure on recommendations for Ed Triver and for Nate Testrowdy for extra duty contracts?
Motion, have we approved the contracts? Second.
All right, any further questions? If not, roll call, please.
Streeter.
Yes.
Hock.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Kudatsky, yes.
All right, brings to the conclusion the new business portion of the meeting. Next on the agenda is item L. We will consider a motion to go to close session to discuss two topics. One is the review of superintendent, and the second is the discussion of property sale, and we'll be moving to close session as allowed by state statute 19.8 by, parentheses, So, where's your motion?
I'll move.
Second. Motion and segment to move to close session. All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you for attending, folks.
Thank you, guys.
Sure, great.